I'd like to call to order the Johnson County Council, May 13th, 2024, meeting, a regular meeting. So we will start with the roll call. Present?
President?
President.
Here.
Johnson Myers.
President.
John Mallers.
Here.
John Denver.
Here.
Here. Okay, and anyone want to do the invocation?
I'll do it.
Okay.
If you could bow your heads. Our gracious Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening as a council, working on behalf of our county and our citizens. We ask for thy guiding hand and spirit to be with us, help us meeting to be calm and pleasant, help us to be productive and respectful, and bless those that are working right now, frontline providers and hospital workers. Bless them with the guidance and clarity of mind, give them truth, wisdom, discernment, keep them alert and oriented. And we ask for thy, for these things, Father in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. You'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to you, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now open for public comments, limited to five minutes at the podium. If anyone in the audience or online has public comments, now would be the time to make yourself know. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead one. Have to approve the agenda for 5/13/24 first. I don't have any changes in front of me. Are there any changes? Anyone has on council they would like to change?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Now to public comments. Do I see any hands in the audience for public comments? Online, sir?
Madam President, I'd like to make a comment. As most of you know, I had a medical emergency on pole day. Actually, Melinda knocked me down on the ground. Really, she was there to help me. And I ended up in a hospital for 24 hours and some people say I'm back to normal, some people say I'm not.
Glad you're back. Glad you're glad you're better, Ron.
That's right. We're all glad.
Yeah. Do you want to point out before we start that under old and new business, at the end of the meeting, we will be continuing our discussion on the 2025 budget. So as long as everyone is aware, this discussion will continue at the end of the meeting. Okay. You ready to move on? So the first item on the agenda is routine matters. It's a consent agenda, and by a single motion, the board approves the items that are presented. And these are salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. And any items on this agenda can be removed by a council member and moved to the regular agenda for detailed discussion. So just with that being said, anyone have anything they need to have removed or discussed? If not, I'm open for a motion.
A move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second for routine matters consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
And it passes. Next on the agenda is salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfer. And first up is Title 4D Juvenile Court.
Hi, Sheena Johnson, Court Administrator. I think I included in my request why we're needing some extra money. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
I can hardly, I can barely hear you, Sheena. I'm sorry. Little better.
Do you have any questions on the Title 4D request?
Are these 4D-related expenses?
As far as I'm aware.
Have they looked at using the incentive funds at all, Title 40 incentive funds for these expenses?
I'm not sure, John. I'll look into it, though.
Okay.
Anything else?
If in fact it is, you know, can be used somewhere else, you'll come back, you will let us know.
Of course I will. Yes.
I, I, okay, thank you. Okay. A motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a first and a second for Title 4D Juvenile Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Circuit Court.
That's me, too. Again, I, it's for interpreter services. There's actually a grant opportunity right now. The application period started May 1st, it goes through May 31st. I would definitely be applying for extra grant funds. They're moving to a fiscal year. They gave us 40 grand back in November to be used through the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, and I'm out. We just need a lot of language access services in the courts, so.
Cost of doing business?
Yep.
Any questions?
Move to approve. Second.
The first and a second for Circuit Court Interpreters Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Fleet Management.
Hello. Bob Lewski, Director of Fleet. Did everybody get a copy of what I'm trying to do? Do you have any questions or anything like that about it?
I do.
I can answer it.
I'm trying to find the printout here. Hang on just a second. I understood what you were asking for. That was very clear. You're basically asking for GPS units for, and five dash cameras for fleet vehicles?
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I understand that, and I'm not in that business, so I'm sure the need is there because you're here before us, which means the majority of the commissioners have approved that. But my question is, what makes this per se an urgent need at this point and not next budget season? I don't see the emergency here.
Well, we've, we've had accidents where because we didn't have the data information, it's a he said, she said, so that's one reason. And the other is to increase our ability to do the data, which is, gives us our maintenance on the vehicles. We've had vehicles in the last few months that have been over their maintenance by thousands of miles, which means potential $70,000 for a new engine, if you can find one. So, yeah, doing it now is, is pretty urgent.
Okay. Well, I've, I've looked into it, and I could say I'm not an expert. I think the need is there, and I agree with everything that you have said, Bob. But in my opinion, I think it's something that can wait till budget time, but I'm just one of seven. So anybody else on here have anything to say? I'm sure I would like to hear it.
I just had a question. So these are GPS units and such. This is not lease units. We keep these, you're correct. It's not like next year you're going to be needing this as well.
No, these are, these are, it's a lease.
Okay.
It's 1350 for the GPS units, 2995 a month for the cameras. The cameras, we do purchase. We own those. But the service that goes along with it, there's a monthly fee, and that's what totals up to the amount of money. I see you're spending.
I am.
How many of these do you have already?
Twenty-five.
Just reading your request, Bob, it's talking about helps ensure miles driven as well as compliance of vehicles being driven outside Johnson County for safety. What, number one, what's that mean? Number two, has that been done now without this?
It's not. I mean, you know, we have instances, like I've said, where we don't have maintenance data coming in every day from the units because we don't have GPS units on them.
But you have a maintenance schedule, do you not?
I have a maintenance schedule, sure.
Okay.
But, you know, when you're dealing with, you know, a couple hundred vehicles.
What's the second piece of that mean as far as appliance or vehicles that are driving outside Johnson County for safety?
Well, we do have people who will take a vehicle out of Johnson County if something happens. Like say one of, say jail van three that does our out-of-state transports. If something happens to that vehicle or something happens to the individuals inside, we have no idea where that vehicle is. With a GPS unit, we know within 30 seconds where that vehicle is.
So without this, I mean, there's a potential for some litigation coming our way without it?
Absolutely.
Okay. And has there been litigation so far?
Not in Johnson County, but I, there are plenty of examples of that, for sure.
Are these for the sheriff's department, or is this?
This will be for the county vehicles. The sheriff, they're going to be doing cameras, dash cams of their own from, from their budget. I don't know when that date is. I don't know. I don't know.
We've already approved the expenditure on the sheriff.
Yeah, yeah. This is just, you know, for the rest of the county vehicles. The great thing about this particular system is, like I've said, this gives us diagnostic tool. So we know, you know, if emissions is going out, I know right now. If something's going on with an engine, I know right now. If something's, if a vehicle, you know, battery's low or the vehicle's parked downtown, well, it happened this week. I'm sorry, last week, where one of the vehicles, from one of the CIT guys, our GPS is on his vehicle. He was downtown, his battery was going low. I was able to text him and say, hey, can you run out to your car right now? And so he was able to go out there and catch that before the battery went, you know, totally dead. And then he would have been stranded or would have had to call, you know, a vehicle to go down there and jumpstart it, things like that.
I agree with everything that you said, and I think it's a wonderful idea. But I think we've lived with it to this point. We can, in my opinion, we can wait to the 2025 budget. But again, I'm one of seven. So does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Your cash balance, 4987, that's not coming out of that cash balance. You need an additional 4685.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm for it only because I don't want to see us, I mean, we got how many? Six months left, seven months left of the rest of the year?
Yes.
We don't, kind of don't know what's going to happen. Really can't take the risk.
I'll second it for the purpose of moving forward, but I also wanted to say the last thing that you said, Bob, about somebody being out of state and being in a situation that may, could be very negative.
Yeah.
So I would be in favor of this.
Any other comments? We have a first and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So it's two opposed. So it would pass?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Next up on the agenda is statewide 911.
Heath Brandt, 911 Director. So back during budget time, we gave back $40,000 to make up, out of the overtime budget to give, to make up that change in the salaries from five to seven percent. So and with our, with our staffing this year, it's better than it was last year. So we're actually, even with the seven percent increase, we're still three percent lower on overtime so far this year. But before, I did move $7,500 earlier this year into the, to this line. But with the fact that we have more, we have less openings right now than we did this time last year, I haven't been able to move money from the, those line items so far this year, but.
So I have a couple of questions. Were you, if you had more people, you, this would decrease, correct, if those positions were filled?
Yeah. So we have, we have three people who are getting ready to be released from training by the end of July, which will help us as well. But we have four openings. We did have somebody retire just a couple of months ago, and we've had a couple other people who have left as well. So we do have a few openings.
So you're not fully staffed now?
No, we're not.
So, yeah, some in training, and you still have open positions?
Yes.
And then, of course, this is a function of emergencies.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have, we have a certain staffing level that we have to maintain to be able to, to be able to function. And, you know, our overtime is down from last year, but also our, our open shifts, you know, the shifts that have gone unfilled has decreased as well.
So we're just one event away from eating this, if this were to be approved, eating this?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If, if we're one event, one disaster, or something of a nature of a tornado away from this being diminished pretty quick, if we approve?
I, I, I'm confident that this will get us, I think by the end, especially by the end of the year, we will, I will be able to move money over if this doesn't last us through, through the end of the year.
We saw in Mike's presentation that your, your budget is pretty challenged.
Yeah, the, the amount of money that we get from the state is not going to change. That's why I've, I've had some discussions about finding another means of funding to go along with the 911 funds that we receive from the state.
Currently have a healthy cash balance?
Currently, yes, but we are out of balance in the additional 90-10 distribution that we get from the state toward the end of every year. Still, in, in the past, has kept us, has put us back in balance. And we're, even with that amount, we're not, we're, we've gotten to a point where we've, we've kind of gone the other way. We're out of balance.
He's had you arrive with the number. Is that based on a run of overtime expense and where you're going to be short? Or how'd you arrive at $75,000?
Well, so originally, I budgeted $100,000 last year, or, you know, during, during budget hearings. Dropped that down to 60. And last year, we spent $242,000 in overtime, so this doesn't even get us to that point. I, I, I put that number out to get us, what I believe, to a point where I'll know, looking at it, we're, we're spending about $6,300 every two weeks on overtime. So I just took it out to a point where I believe I'll know if I need more and what I will be able to move from other line items where it's not going to be used for the rest of the year. Because I have some people who aren't making the full amount. And then, like, right now, I've got four positions that are open, so I'm not spending out of those right now. So I'll know by the, you know, if I get to a point later in the year where, where we're getting low again, I'll know how much I can take from each one of those to move over. Like last year, I transferred $91,000. And it's just right now with our staffing being better than it was last year, I just don't know how much I can take out of those at this point.
Are you actively trying to hire those four positions?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you expect to get that special disposition from the state, or is that going away?
That, I mean, there's, there's been no indication that it's going to go away. I mean, they're required. Whatever the state doesn't spend, at the end of every year, they are required to, to send that to the counties. So I, there's been no indication. Last year, I think we received, I'm trying to think, it was probably about $250,000 additional we received in October. As I said, that's still not enough to put us back in balance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor statewide 911 overtime? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Information Technology. Dues and subscriptions.
Jeff West, ITJS Coordinator. This is to get Office 365 for computers around here. We're currently on Office 2016, and some stuff's starting to not run well. We'll have to go back and roll back updates and stuff. And at the end of this year, or well, into the beginning of next year, they're going to stop supporting it altogether.
You're showing my age. I was so excited when we got 2016.
And they don't sell it like that anymore where you can buy it and it can last. It's dues per year, per month now.
Yeah, starting.
Sounds like it's the cost of doing business, Jeff.
Pretty much.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Health Department, Office Equipment and Furniture.
Hi. Hi. Connie Weigel, Health Department Office Manager. We're just requesting to appropriate some of our COVID vaccine reimbursement money that we had received to cover any, some other furniture and appliance things that we needed for the new building that were not part of our original furniture thing. So we'll get appliances, and we have to get some fireproof cabinets for our genealogy books that currently are not in those. Those run about five grand apiece. We're probably getting at least two, maybe three of them. So, and just any other thing that we didn't anticipate needing when we first did the original budget for the furniture.
You had some, said something about genealogy books?
Yeah. So we have books that go back to like the 1800s and stuff with birth, birth certificates, death certificates, things like that, that we have to keep, that we keep for record, and that way people can come in and look and retrace their genealogy and stuff. So we need to put those in some fireproof cabinets.
Has that been transferred over to the, I know we had a couple that were doing some genealogy transfers.
I think you mean as far as like scanning those, or?
Scanning those and making them public.
I think some of them have been scanned. I'm not sure that all of those have been scanned. I know they have entered most of those into, like, online onto our computers in a file and stuff to find them easier. But as far as just having them for record, we want to keep them as safe as we can, so.
So it also contains disease information?
We do have some books that are, yeah, the disease, contagious diseases and stuff like that, books from the past, too. I see those in there.
Would that be confidential?
I'm not sure on that. Being back that far, those may not be.
Hippo didn't start until, I don't know, but I'm sure it wasn't back in the 1800s, but yeah, no. I would like to see all those records be transferred over. I've got a lot of people that do, you know, genealogy work.
Yeah.
I'm sure that would help them.
Yeah, we, I mean, people come in and they want to research, they, we put the books out, they look through them, find their ancestors and stuff, and do their tracking and things like that. Quite often, actually, we have people come in looking for that.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
How long do we have on the, to spend the remaining COVID funds?
It's unlimited. It's ours to spend till we use it up. The state, once we got it, it was ours, any remaining money to use for what we needed for the Health Department's daily activities or functioning of the Health Department itself.
Any further discussion?
No, I'd move to approve. Second.
You have a first and a second for the Health Department Office Equipment and Furniture. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Aye, thank you.
Extradition Claims.
Didn't we get an email from the sheriff?
I know. We were told to go easy on you.
Damian, Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Welcome, Damian. I don't think anybody up here bites.
I believe the sheriff sent you an email with the, regarding the three items for the sheriff's office in regards to extradition, jail, grant, and drug-free grant. And if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Yes, he did come, I, I did talk to him, and again, the extradition, you guys have no power over that. So it's, again, pretty much the price of doing business. And the CDNCF jail is, is a grant. And number nine on the nongovernmental for the sheriff, that's also a grant, just to point out, as you said. So is there any further discussion on items seven, eight, and nine from the sheriff's department?
Motion to approve. All three. Seven, eight, and nine. Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
You guys were kind.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should be, I should be repeating that, but because I call everybody up here John, I haven't been doing that tonight.
Jonathan T. Myers. I make the motion to approve C7, C8, and C9. You're welcome.
I've asked for nameplates to be set sideways, so I know where everybody is. Next up, item D, we have Hinsley Fire Protection District, a discussion on replacement of a fire truck.
Hello, all. Good evening. Jeff Peters, Peters Franklin, Financial Advisor to the Fire District. I think you all got a little synopsis of kind of what's going on. But for the Fire District, they have had a long lead time on ordering this fire truck. So typically in financings, you know, we would come before the fiscal body to get approval as we would issue the debt, sign the contract, go forward with the project, as we did for their fire station six or seven years ago. For this, the approval and the borrowing won't happen until two-plus years from now. So what we're really here to do today is to inform you as the fiscal body, and any future fiscal body, and the public in general, that the Fire District will come back in the middle of 2026 and ask you to approve debts that will go on the tax rolls for pay 27. The current fire station that is being financed today pays off at the beginning of '27 with 2026 tax levies, so these will not overlap. And the plan of the Fire District today is to amortize that new debt based on whatever the interest rates are two and a half years from now in order to pretty much have the same debt service and the same tax rate that they have on the station today. So amortization on that new truck will probably be five or six years. As the station today was a $2 million expenditure amortized across 10 years. We assume this will be basically a million dollars amortized probably across five years. But again, we will come to the council, whatever council is sitting there a little over two years from now. Like I say, not asking for any approval, but did want to bring it publicly before you so that when we come back to the body two years from now, we can continue the conversation, get the approvals in place. We have representatives from the Fire District that can answer your questions, and the department, if you want to talk about the truck itself that's being replaced. That, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Open for discussion. Any questions?
What kind of truck you going to buy?
Fire truck.
A red one.
It's going to be our, our first-out engine.
Could you say your name for the reference?
I'm sorry, Andy Seaston, Deputy Chief Fire Department. It's going to replace a 2002 Pierce Fire Engine. Had we known what we know today, we've, we have been typically doing a 20-year replacement. We thought we would be smart and spend a little money on it and extend it. And unfortunately, with escalating costs, it's going to cost us quite a bit of money because we did that.
What's the capacity, the gallon capacity?
It's a, it's a 1,000-gallon tank with a 1,500-gallon pump.
That's what you have now?
Correct. Well, we have a 1,000-gallon tank with a 1250 pump, so.
Thank you.
It'll be exact, I mean, it's almost spec-wise identical, other than the bigger pump.
So you said in 2026, you'll be back asking for money for the replacement of the fire truck that you have that's aged 2002, right?
Correct.
But when is it that you actually lay hold of the truck?
We won't get the truck. If we order it, we have a extended lead time. They're saying up to three years before the truck will be built.
So does this commitment from council tonight enable you to?
Yes, we have, we need to sign the contract in order to get the truck ordered. Yes, we haven't signed, we need to sign the contract in order to get the truck ordered.
Yeah.
But this council won't be giving any commitment tonight. This is purely a discussion?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
But you will, you're not going to wait to sign the contract till 2027?
Correct. They'll have to sign the contract now in order to get construction underway. And then it'll be delivered at maximum 42 months, I believe, from now. Unbelievable, there's that much of a lead time on trucks, but.
Wow.
So even though we're not giving approvals tonight, they'll sign the contract to proceed, but the approvals won't occur until 2026?
Correct. And, and you know, I don't know of another alternative we have at this point, other than for them to give you the information that they have and for them to go ahead and sign the contract, go forward, and then come to some future council in order to get the approval that they'll require.
Obviously, it's come before the board, right?
Before the fire district board, yes.
It would be fruitless for us to come to any type of encouragement or decision here because in 2026, the big part of us may not even be here.
Exactly. And again, that's part of our, you know, bringing it forward, putting it on the public record, so. Everybody's aware this is something that is going to be undertaken two years from now, but you know, the discussion has initially occurred, the need's there, the truck's old. This is what we're going to go through.
When she said we may not be here, she pointed.
No, I did not. I said, we.
That did kind of look like.
We may not be here.
Have you looked at any pre-owned engine perhaps, or is that not something that you want to do with the first-out engine?
The problem is this truck runs 90% of our calls. And we cannot find, you can go out and find what they call, you know, standard specs, but those standard specs are 750-gallon trucks. They don't have 1,000-gallon tanks. We need a 1,000-gallon from where we're at. We don't have, 95% of our area is not hydrated. We need to take as much water as we can when we go out the door. So there's, there's trucks out there that we could buy today. We don't need them today. But in order to get our 1,000-gallon tank to what we need for this, for our area, it's an older truck.
I appreciate what you guys do. Thank you for your service. Has your, what's your run load compared to three, five years ago?
We have increased from 450 to over 625 last year. And we're already on pace to, to take that again. So, and this, like I said, this, this engine does 90% of our calls, so.
Any further discussion?
I'm okay with it, but I won't be here too.
Me neither.
I told him not to do that.
The names will change. We won't have as many Johns if you might have.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, under old and new business, we have discussion of the 2025 budget. So based on some information that we've heard today, I'm going to attempt to lay a little groundwork. We heard from our financial advisor, Mike Royer, and things look good for Johnson County. As far as employee raises, we have a ceiling of 6%. His guesstimate on the cost of living increase is four. None of this is written in stone, but these are Mike's best guesses, and he's usually right on the money. What we're going to be discussing this evening is the possibility of incorporating longevity pay. Mr. Dear and Mr. Dittmers both have been working hand-in-hand with our consultants in providing us with three options if this is something we move forward on, for longevity pay. This is new data. We just received this, actually, some of us right before this meeting. Understanding that the director's budgets throughout the county are due to the auditor's office by June 13th, I realize that this is something that we're going to need to act on fairly quickly. After tonight's discussion, we probably will have to convene a special meeting to make final decisions. Mr. Dear has a presentation, and then we'll have a discussion. But I do want to say, in all probability, final decisions will be made at the special meeting because we are going to ask that the longevity options, one through three, that the auditor's office provide us with actual numbers on how it would impact the, the money. So it's hard to make a decision when you don't know the type of money you're, you're, you're working with. So we will need some additional information for an affirmative action, but I promise that will come very soon for confirmative action. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dear, and he's going to update us all. Between him and Mr. Dittmers, they're going to update us on what they know, and then we'll all discuss it.
Which will bring us up to date, the council approved as part of our expenditures this year a present, information from WIS for longevity pay options. They've put together three that are before you here, and they have different processes to them. Whether or not they max out, how soon they start, which is number one. Longevity pay option, simply stated, starts after the first year and doesn't start later. And option three on the back is a hybrid of the first two, which they reward a longevity pay on five longevity steps instead of the others, maxing out at 15 years of service. And John Dittmers and I met with Addy and discussed that, and my suggestion is, is that the first step is to say, irregardless of what it costs, we just simply don't want to do it, or we do want to do it. Second step is for, I checked with Amy, and she, last year in, in June, I believe it was, ran a longevity analysis. Of course, we've had lost employees, we've gained employees, replaced employees, and then everybody would have a year more who had been on, in service since that time. So those numbers, she could run all three, have those done quickly, and have it to us before we would have a special meeting. So the, my point being, and then she did indicate that longevity is now occurring in about 40 to 50 counties, which is about 40% of the 92. It is a trending topic that is being considered by a normal, a large number of counties and cities. And its purpose is, a primary purpose that, that we have the ability to reward those who are loyal to the county, who, you know, who are, you know, showing up every day and doing their job. And so my suggestion is, before we get into whether it's 6%, 5, 4, or 3, that we decide that we don't want to go forward with any kind, irregardless of what it costs, or we do want to go forward, and then Amy would need to run the numbers and would see the impact on the total operational budget as it relates to salaries, and to stay on our schedule, as Pam indicated. That would require a quick, hopefully a quick follow-up meeting prior to our June 13th because we do have a schedule that we have committed to by policy. So I, John and I are here to answer any questions about what's before you as far as the details that were presented.
John, do you have anything that you'd like to say before we start with questions? Or I would like for each of us at least to give our opinion, so people will know, you know, what we think and feel about it. But before we do that, John, since you've worked with them.
Ron covered that very well, and I think if you're going to go down that path, that's the path to go down.
If no one, if no one is opposed to that, I'd like for each one to individually speak, you know, your thoughts, your input. Again, we're not making any decisions. There's, there's financial factors that are going to have to play into this. So, and that also will be, have a lot to do with the percentage of, of raising crease based on these numbers, so.
I just have one additional comment. Back when we did the personnel committee back in October, one of the suggestions that very first came on the table for the first committee, personnel committee, and John Dittmers and John Mollers were there, is that they, that the majority of people on that committee suggested that we go forward, but looking into a longevity system.
And I do know, I do know there were some questions earlier about several of us on if this was a council process or if, in fact, this was a commissioner's process. We did speak with our legal counsel, and they are going to look in it to confirm. But at this point, it appears this is something that is under the, the guidance of the council. So if that's something else we will have, I don't want to say definitive, because we're pretty, pretty sure at this point. But just to be clear, we, we will make sure this is under our purview in making these decisions. So who would like to go first?
Well, I'll go first at this end of the table. I've made the presentation, and I'm supportive.
Speak into the, I can.
I've made the presentation, and I'm supportive of the number three.
Number three? Number three is what he said, on the, the steps.
I'm in, you know, in support of it, looking into it further, having the numbers of employees with how many years and what kind of impact this is going to have on the budget. I mean, there's a lot of unknown here.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, I mean, I just like more information on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, my thought is, in order to move forward, I'd like to have definitive numbers. If we have a $22 million salary budget, and these can be as much as 5%, that number becomes appreciable, so I would like to have those numbers before going forward with approval. But I think the special meeting is a good idea, once we have all those numbers and are able to sit down and consider. But this is a, this is a heavy lift if we decide to do it.
Correct. Prior to seeing the numbers, I am in support of this. I was in support of this 30 years ago when it came about and was here for a short time. My personal opinion, being a 30-plus-year employee, is that this helps with the retention of experience, it's recognition of service, it's a morale boost. It can be cost-effective, and the institutional knowledge that you could maintain. And that, you can't put a price tag on. I believe it enhances productivity as well. People have something to look forward to, and it also provides a competitive advantage. So based on not having the numbers, I would say at this point, I am still 50/50. We're going to have to see the impact. It's like John said, it is, it will be a heavy lift. So not against it, but until we have the information and exactly how it's going to affect us, that, that's my thoughts on it, so.
I agree with everything Pam just said.
I'm trying to be for it. I'm trying to be for it. I got mixed emotions because the whole notion of longevity pay and paying someone to come and do what they're being paid to do in the first place is where I'm trying, that's the time I'm trying to get over. But in lieu of the fact, well, in lieu of any kind of evaluation system that provides for bonus pay or something like that, this might be the, that's where I see the crease in the zone as far as where I can get there with it, but I'm reluctant about it. But we can't do anything else, seeing the numbers, because it may be cost-effective.
Right. I, I'm absolutely in support of this. Looking at the different pay options, I think I would be for the hybrid. But of course, we do need to take a look at the numbers. And I also have further questions, though. Would this be applied to, like, judges and all that? Or is, are we just going to take those people out of it? I mean, that's a question I have.
It's a good question. I just assumed the elected officials would not be included.
I, I can answer that, that according to Addy, they are not.
Okay.
That, what you remember, John, that they are not. Elected officials are not included.
Thank you, because I do not remember that.
But they are not, because, just because. I mean, we could, you could say they're included as policy, but the general industry-wide standard is they are not.
Okay, so.
They change every four years potentially.
So are there any further questions or discussions of this?
I, I mean, looking at it, if you look at somebody with 16 to 20 years, they're going to get $2,000. So if you look at the 16-year mark, they'll get $100 or whatever. You know, the 17th year, that, if you look at years of service, that number's going down. I think it maybe should be just a flat rate per year.
And that is.
Every year you're there.
Yeah.
So if you, you know, you got 21, 24 years, you got somebody with 24 years getting the same thing as somebody with 21 years. And then one with 24 years, his is actually going to be a little, not less, but it's going to be the same amount, but years of service, it's less.
And John, that's where the hybrid.
On the back.
On the back, yeah.
So is this to be below the 6% or in addition to the 6%?
I think until we get the numbers, we don't know that yet. I think that's one of the decisions that we're going to have to make at the special meeting, once we see what these numbers are.
Have we contacted any of the other elected officials?
I have not, no. I don't, I don't have a need to do that unless, I guess individuals would be welcome to reach out, or anyone would be welcome to reach out.
I just want to make one point, and I asked the question of our consultant, and he indicated that with our excess, with our 5.7, that even if we did, not suggesting that's what I vote for, but even if we did the 6, there still would be enough there to fund it, in his opinion, because I talked to him previously about it.
And this is also something, if it's approved for 2025 budget, everyone needs to keep in mind, this does not lock us in. For, it'll lock anyone in for the 2026 budget. It can be removed as quickly as it was put in. So it's not something that, once it's, it's done, you know, that it's going to move forward every year. So these are the things that, and we'll open it again if anybody has anything else to add, but in the special meeting, we're going to all need to know how we truly feel, what the numbers are and what, what our decisions are. Because, as I said, June 13th is the deadline for the budgets. Hopefully, everyone will have everything plugged in except this part, and it, it won't be that much. I know Amy just looked at me like crazy, so.
Can we set that special meeting date?
Yeah, unless anyone else has anything else.
I mean, I think if we're going to, if we do it, I think we need to put it in an ordinance or something. Like you said, we do it for '25, but '26 is gone, '27. If we do an ordinance, we can lock it in a little bit more.
It'll be in the salary ordinance, just where it will go, is in the salary ordinance, correct?
What I had envisioned would, it would be in the salary ordinance yearly. I mean, there's nothing that would stop the council from adopting a separate ordinance, just announce this is a new policy, that every year would be in the salary ordinance. You guys could do that certainly, but I don't think that would be necessary. You could just do it through the salary ordinance every year.
Okay. And again, that's a good point, and we can just, you know, we can think about that, but dates? Have any date options? And is this something that if someone has to zoom in, they can, or would they need to be present?
On a special meeting, if it's concerned with the budget, I think you need to be, yeah, no, you do, you have to be here.
And would it need to, all four, all seven of us would need to be here, or just a majority?
Well, if you're not here, I don't believe you can vote, so it's, you would, you'd just be absent, so.
I'd take the majority of the whole council.
But if three people show up, we could.
Yeah, if, if only three people show up, you can at the meeting. If only four people show up, it needs to be unanimous.
Okay, all right. So, anyone have any options on dates?
So is there, I mean, like, today we had a special meeting, which was a meeting before the meeting. Is, can we not do that again?
No, that's too late for the budget deadline if we wait until June.
Well, then, I think I'd like to go ahead and make a vote for it today.
I cannot make a, I will not call, I don't know where it stands, but I wouldn't call for a vote without the numbers. for a vote without the numbers knowing how it's gonna affect us.
What day is that? If you could give us the day.
Monday, it's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Here.
So it's the Monday before our regular meeting.
I'm good with June 3rd.
Does that give you enough time?
What time are we looking at?
Amy, does that give you guys enough? I was gonna say, it's just gonna be a matter of put everyone in reports, right? So that you should be fine on getting the numbers? Okay. Anyone have a, I'm good anytime, whatever's, those that are working full-time will be the ones needs to set the time.
I'm gonna be tended to it best.
You're good anytime on that day.
Anytime, yeah.
I'm good anytime on that day.
I can be here.
I mean, I can be here. I guess I prefer, like, 6 o'clock then.
In the morning?
No, at PM. 6:00 PM.
Yes, yeah, 6:00 in the morning.
You can do it at my house while I'm on dialysis at 6:00.
Mr. Ditmers?
Evening's fine.
Evening's fine?
Yeah.
June 3rd, 6:00 PM?
6:00.
All right, and to clarify, that will be the actual budget discussion that we've deferred from tonight.
At that point, we're gonna have the numbers on the three options. We're going to decide whether we want to do it or not. Based on those numbers, then we're gonna make a decision on the amount of increase. We're gonna set out for guidelines.
No, not guidelines, affirmative.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not using the word guidelines. An affirmative amount, correct, for raises. At this point, I got people indicating that they want to ask questions from the audience or from out here. Is it okay to do that, or we don't, what do we, what do we do?
You can take questions if you want.
Okay, if you'd like to come to the podium, we'll give you a couple of minutes.
Can I just make a comment while we're waiting on her?
Absolutely.
I kinda have a, a little bleeding heart here for some of these elected officials who, yes, they are re-elected every four years, but they've been here numerous years and numerous terms, and, I don't know, like our prosecutor, and, I mean, I don't know, I guess, I think, but I understand you can't pick and choose either, so that's kind of my feelings.
My comment's not on that.
Okay.
Teresa Petro, county recorder, just something to consider when we're meeting. So for those of us that pay everything out of our perpetuation camp, will that longevity come out of general fund?
We will discuss that, but I can't, I, I wouldn't think, it will come out, all come out of general fund, I would think.
I just wanted to.
We wouldn't expect it to come out yours.
Can you pay them all out of your?
Yeah, how about we just call them there?
How many, I'll start you right there. One statement, and. How many terms have you served?
I'm sorry?
Is this your?
This is my second, but I was here before that. There's, there's some elected officials that were here for 25 years and then were elected for eight, so, yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is a thing, but it's part of being elected too, I guess, so.
You know what I always tell people, if you're coming to work for county government to get rich, you may need to go look someplace else. You gotta have a heart for service in order to do this.
Right.
So, anybody else have anything they want to say? Yes, sir.
While he's coming up, one additional comment, that this would be under the council budget, not the individual department budgets.
Correct, correct, under one line item, under the council.
Oh, the council, not commissioners?
Nope.
Okay.
And then, again, I think it's just administrative bookkeeping things that we'll discuss at that time.
Mike Kaufman, community liaison, white group attention. I just have one question. The way that came out, and you don't do our budget, we propose our budget, and then you approve our budget. But the way that came out today was, oh, we're thinking of maybe up to 6% raise in salaries, then another 4% on COA, and then that's the way it came out.
No, that's not correct. That was, giving that as information. This is what the expected is for the, okay, what word am I looking, you just?
Does the 6% include everything? Does include the CO adjustment, does include longevity pay?
I think the question on the, on the CO, he was asking what the rate was. He was asking our financial planner what the rate was, correct?
Yeah. So the 4% would be what they're saying would be included, let's just say we're gonna give six and not do this. Let's just say that one other thing, we've looked at these numbers, we're not doing this, we can't do it.
But the six would be.
Would include the four, correct.
Oh, I need, thank you, Sean.
I guess I'm a little confused too, so.
Don't do this to me.
What guidance, what guidance, are we giving guidance as to what, we haven't done that yet.
No, we're giving information on how we're gonna come up with our affirmative guidance to be presented, to be given at the special meeting.
Based upon the impact of the potential of longevity pay, and whether or not it's included in the 6% or not included in the 6%.
Right. Full disclosure, that's the decisions we'll be making at the special meeting. Anybody else? Questions are getting harder. Okay, well, if there's no other discussion, then I'm ready for motion.
Well, Adam said he wanted this meeting to go till, like, 10 o'clock tonight.
First and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.